Start this again, the study session October tenth twenty twenty-three is called the order. How about another roll call, please, Donna?
Okay, council member Bod. Council member Sherman is attending via Zoom.
Here.
Thank you. Council member Gutierrez.
Here.
Marinesco. Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Council member McDowell. And council member Peterson is absent this evening.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Get started on our study session. Community Economic Development Director Jay Hill has information for us about our comprehensive plan update.
Being mayor and council for meetings are fine. Um, this is uh the official kickoff uh of our comp plan process with the council. Um, we've already kind of announced the staff that this was happening, but we haven't started kind of scoping process yet. Um, really, this is an opportunity to give you guys a little bit more information about what the process is going to look like, how the schedule's working out. And most specifically tonight's scoping comments from you, things that you want to see in the plan direction that you want us to take with our approach towards the plan. Um, including, uh, you know, the, the process that we're going to take, um, whenever by having, uh, we're going to suggest steering committee and so on. Um, and so I'm going to walk through this tonight, uh, times where I talk and times where I ask questions, but if you have questions at any point, please just let me know and happy to jump right in if that will help. So. So there are required elements under uh the growth management act that we have to have in our comprehensive plan. And then there are optional elements that we can add along with it. Um, and so we actually, we have two optional elements already in our development recreation. Um, the remainder of them, we, we also have in our plan, they're mandatory, uh, land use, housing, capital facilities, utility strength. There's a new one, uh, that just came through with HB eleven one this year and it's for climate change resilience. Uh, which also looks at things like hazard planning and uh having a community that's, that's more resistant and resilient to natural. Um, and so, uh, we're not planning on this time, uh, having uh any additional conflict elements. Um, we were going to consider solar aspects, um, and solar potential as part of the climate change and resilience. Um, just giving homeowners information about can they, where can they, where are the best places? Um, you know, buildings have to be oriented in a certain direction and you have to be have certain solar aspect facing, uh, you know, directionally on, on the compass to make sure that it's right for you and so on. So, um, but there's the ability for us to incorporate that into just the resilience element. Without having to do a whole separate solar energy element. And then there is the option for sub area. And if somebody felt very strongly about this, um, what we can do is identify areas that we want to see specific types of design standards or specific growth patterns that are separate and unique from the remainder of the community. So, for example, we can have a downtown sub area or a um, angle side sub area or something that where you identify a specific area that you want to see additional study, additional level of detailed policies. Well, some objectives, it's basically a, a mini con within that area.
Um, we're gonna have that with, with Stark District, don't we?
I, it, it's a little different. Um, I, I, I mean, there, there are regulations and stuff. Uh, this is uh at the state, you know, the, the GMA level where you're looking at more than just the design standards, the structures. You're looking at, at when we go into sub area, I think you're looking at the infrastructure, you're looking at um uh, policies, you know, that it, it, it's essentially like a mini conflict for that area. It's, it's very expensive. Um, and so I've worked in jurisdictions where, um, for example, when I was in Redmond, um, there's a downtown sub area plan. A Marion or Village Sub Area Plan, which Marion was an industrial area that we were looking at turning into a mixed use district. Um, and then it was overlay, which was a commercial area that we were looking at turning into a mixed district. And so there were three sub areas and then the rest of the city wasn't under sub area. It was just under the general plans. So, um, there is the potential for that. Um, it's a small enough community that I don't know that you need to do that. But if you want to, uh, if you wanted to do something really visionary or transformative for an area, um, you know, totally taking a, a blank, you know, uh, former logging property and developing a new town site or something, you know, kind of, you know, built center with shopping and all that. Cause you can do that. Um, and so, you know, there might be some appropriate areas in the community to consider that. Um, uh, and that's, you know, food for thought at this point. I don't have any specific recommendations right now. Um, you know, the place I would think that other than intensive level of discussion in, um, already developed areas like downtown, um, we do have a lot of opportunity with the newly annexed, uh, Peacock Bridge that they're calling the heights now, um, that maybe we have a little bit more guidance for what we want the growth in that area to look like. And so that would be an appropriate place for a sub area. Um, again, I'm not making a recommendation that we go do that thing, um, but if the council was interested in doing something like that, it, that would be a place that would be pretty appropriate. Um, Sheldon Hills, for example, back when they came in with their development plan years and years ago, um, this would have been a good place for a sub area. Um, again, to really guide and, and get down into the weeds on what you want the patterns to grow like, so. Um, with that, if, if anybody has any questions about the concept of the sub area plan or like ideas about it, if you want to do those.
Cause we're planning jointly with the counties, similar, um, this is a similar thing within the county. So thinking about the property of one oh two and one oh one, it's in a UGA. Spend surplus and determining if the sub area plan will be appropriate for something like that. It's undeveloped land.
It's, that's, that's a little small for kind of the sub area plan, but we could, we could make it a policy in the comp plan that that area. And it's like a small area master plan or something. Is that, that you're really looking just at the site there, but yeah, I, it's large enough. I mean, it's about thirty acres total. Definitely could consider that. Um, let me, let me do a little bit more work on thirty acres and that's small, so.
Well, I'm thinking of um legislative priorities and potentially what um, potentially what we can get funding for, planning, planning dollars could be something that we can do jointly with the county. I think that would be a good demonstration of the cooperative effort as well, you know, in seeing how co- planning together. Um, and then coming up with a, a plan for a certain particular project site. That would be good.
I have a question. So rural villages. Is that, would that be a, if there was someone wanted to do a rural village somewhere around here? Would that have to do with uh building types that they put in?
It, it could. Um, rural villages in this context kind of means more, um, like the unincorporated areas like the Union or with Porter or something. Where it's a, a smaller unincorporated village.
Okay.
Yeah, in a rural.
Okay.
Um, and also we could do a sub area plan, uh, for the urban growth area of the Sheldon GA. So looking at the unincorporated area around there.
For the whole GA.
The whole, you're breaking in North UGA, South UGA, something that there's, there's, there as well. Um, we will, as we get through the process with data collection, setting up policies and things like that, if we think that there's a place where, you know what? This should all be grouped into one very specific set of links with Sarah. We'll bring that recommendation forward, but just wanted to let you guys know that this was a place where you could say, I really want intensive study and policies in this specific area. And that's, that's an option to us. So, so going into this schedule.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, we have this great gift of a urban growth area. I'd like to like really look into how can we be the most environmental, the most eco-friendly? How can we even do like an eco-village that doesn't have fossil fuels on it, just totally solar, totally electric? You know, almost like, you know, golf carts instead of vehicles, you know, like a whole kind of, you have H O A. I mean, I'm not talking about like hobbit holes and, you know, barefoot hippies, but you know, um, maybe, I mean, but if, if there could be like an eco-village or the highest environmental standards that go with the contours of the land. And, you know, just do a lot of study into that and like, um, make it like a feature of Shelton. Oh, Shelton, you can have a hobbit hole-ish type. Mini home and have five meals a day and you know, walk around in an organic place where there's no pesticides, you know? So I'm, I mean, that's kind of a, like the dream, like aspirational dream, right? Instead of having leopards and having, you know, um, just cookie cutter suburbia everywhere, you know, how can we be like unique to Shelton, right? Like if we love our natural beauty, how can we, um, preserve that when our, in our designs, you know, environmental designs when we do? Um, uh, policing, we can do environmental designs for our, our housing. You know, that's kind of where I'd like to go with this. If I had druthers, if I had a dream, I still have a dream. Um, that, that would be a place that we would have patio homes, more eco-friendly and smaller and more of a community feel than, um, suburbia where nobody knows each other next door. So that's kind of, you know, they're tree-lined streets and twenty mile, twenty is funny, you know, that, that kind of sheltered up, you know, I'd like to see in the future. Um, and then all our parks are connected through our, in, um, our ADA accessible pathways, you know, do we really go into this blue zone theory about having, um, um, healthier lifestyles as part of what we want to do with our town, you know? And have people walking from uptown, coming downtown to go spend money and have brunch and then, you know, walking back up or, you know, um, cartways or, you know, scooters or, you know, accessible pathways to everywhere. Or even focus points where we can do, um, more, hmm, more, uh, public transit to everywhere. So that we don't even need a car, like we could just roll out of bed and we'll move over there and, you know, twenty minutes not waiting for the forty-five minute um, cycle, you know, so, or if we're healthy enough, we could take a walk and it's accessible and hey, let's take thirty minutes out of our life to, um, take a nice walk and enjoy shelter. And along the way, um, frequent our, our downtown and uptown. So anyway, that's just my goals and visions of what I want Shelton to be in the next, um, ten or twenty years, um, if, you know, Rick's still there, so.
Jazley. I have a quick question about our industrial zones. I mean, I, I know like there's not a ton of land available in those at this point, but at some point, a lot of that is vacant land at, at that. Our timber companies are going to want to get rid of, I mean, and it's some of the most prime land in town. It's, it's the waterfront is, is mainly all industrial zone. I mean, how, how does that potentially look as we progress and that land does come available to not to like, to be able to do residential projects in and things beyond the industrial zone?
So this is that opportunity to say, what do we want in the next ten, twenty years? Like what, what is the long-term plan for if, if this, we get the town of our dreams, right? Like, like, you know, so if we envision being waterfront community, you know, kind of like you're talking about with the condos or shops or whatnot down by the water. We're connecting community and water. That, that's a vision that, you know, as we filter this through the process and when I'll be refine that. Um, that's, uh, one of the sub areas that we do further intensity on, cause like we, I mean, we created whole cloth in that area. So that would require even more intensive study.
It really would do, especially environmental, because we've had, you know, that's an old plant. I mean, it's been wild, wild west. I mean, who knows what we're going to find as you start digging. As you start testing.
Groundfield and greenfield redevelopment, now putting that into our plans as, as areas where we can focus.
It's one of our most amazing parts of town. Yeah, it's just not utilized for anything that's, that, that we can enjoy.
Um, adding to some things to look at, um, that is, you know, uh, again, we're, we're, I'll, I'll get a little bit more into like, what kind of the, the bookends that we're going to put around the comprehensive plan. Like, we, we want to look at different, uh, development scenarios and, you know, there's going to be like growth, lots of growth, um, you know, heavy industrial, heavy residential, like that kind of stuff. Um, but, but one of them is like, what do we do with, you know, how do we reinvent ourselves, you know? Um, I think on the next, my next slide here, I'll come back to this in a second after I go back to staple, but, you know, really we're talking about a level of effort. Do we want just a simply compliant update like GMA requires us to do this every ten years, we're going to check the boxes and we're going to, you know, submit our plan to commerce. Get done with it, or do we want like a complete visionary redrafting, you know, total leading document, how is, you know, reimagining the city of Shelton, or do we want something, something, uh, my preference is something, somewhere, right? I'm just cause, you know, we, we have limited time. We haven't done a lot of like the free work necessary to do like a real visionary kind of project. But I think there's an option still to have vision in our project, um, and things that you're talking about, I mean, that would be transformative to this town. Absolutely. Um, and so.
And I, I, I know I've been talking about it since I, I got on councils, just that we don't really have a clear group vision. We can, we have six or seven unique visions and not really pulling that together with like, with something like this. Uh, I'm excited about this.
We will, so to, tonight is not setting the plan for, um, tonight is just kind of getting the first couple of things with your scope and talking about the level of effort and timelines and schedules and asking for some direction on, on policies moving forward. We'll come back with like, really coming up with like the plan, vision, plan, mission, like what, what are we going to get? What are we going to do with it? How does it work?
Awesome.
Um, and, and that'll be one more touch that we have with council, a couple of months ahead in the future as, as we've gotten through data collection, as we've got steps, so, all, any other questions about this part real quick? So we'll, we'll jump into schedule. So, um, we're starting now, it's October. Um, and we have to be done, has to be adopted by the state as you would do. Which sounds like a good long time, but it's, it's a lot of work being done in, in two years span, especially since we have to have an environmental impact statement prepared. With this, um, we're looking at some planned in action concepts to go along with the EIS as well. So essentially what that does is under CBO, we say we've already pre-analyzed the impacts of a certain amount of development, certain, uh, you know, maybe of numbers, uh, thousand new residential units and, uh, fifteen thousand new vehicle trips per day and so on and so on. And then somebody can come in and claim coverage on that and say, hey, this was already evaluated, it's already improved BIS. And we, we are claiming coverage under this and then their project advances. And so it's one way that we take the brunt essentially of the CPO process now. And then, and I, and I, I think it's more honest this way, because, you know, we're, we're telling the community that impacts are good. And then later on, you can say those impacts were already analyzed and, and the development shouldn't fall because we already agreed this was a good thing. It, it keeps us from having to reinvent the wheel again later. Causes more work for us upfront now. Um, and it's a little bit bigger of a target on it now, but it, it helps move things a little bit faster later, um, in the development process. Instead of holding up for you, you're still in its impacts, which is a lot of.
And that only lasts for like seven years and you have to redo that again.
Yes, and you can, you can do amendments, um, and there are attendments, uh, you can do, um, and as you go through and claim amounts of coverage, you can reanalyze and add more. And then there's, there's a long process to make.
Some of the elements of the EAS or foundation may, may carry on longer, right?
Yes.
Depending on conditions, like conditions, environmental conditions, what changes, um, if you're dealing with pocket openers or something, you have to do another study.
And, and the EIS doesn't have to cover all of that, like it doesn't have to get coverage against everything, um, just the things that need to be in place. Um, anyway, uh, so, uh, in quarter four, um, we're going to start off with steering selection, which we'll talk about in a minute. Uh, if that's a direction the council wants to go, there's, there's the, the short version, but quick is that there's two ways you can do this. Um, normally, in, in a city that has a planning commission, planning commission might be the one running the effort or in even a larger city and create a steering committee. Um, to free the planning commission, you know, and so, so much stuff comes just directly here to council that, I mean, you guys need to act as, as the steering bodies of this conference and just a lot of work. And so it's my recommendation that we create a steering committee with maybe one or two council members on it, um, and then invite community members to go into that. Um, so we start by selecting steering committee during this final, where we're doing data collection, we're doing interviews with people. We're really trying to gather what is the scope of the problem, what are we trying to do and solve this plan? Um, and that's more of like the technical kinds of scoping, that's policymakers internally, externally, that's our partners. Um, that's, uh, your staff scoping is super important. Our staff are the ones out there, you know, doing the work in the community. And they're great opportunity to get ideas for, hey, if we did this, we could do it better if we, when we have this, when we have that. So, um, the opportunity for internal scoping starts by quarter one of next year.
All that, Jay, right? We're talking about all staff.
Oh, all staff, yeah, yeah. I mean, these are line staff.
Absolutely, everybody.
Whether you're, whether you're the city manager or on streets crew or a part-time volunteer, uh, with the parks department or something. Like, we, we want to hear from the people who are making this happen. Um, then we take that out to public scoping, we're one, two, three, four, and that is, uh, what I affectionately call the road show. And I'll have a little slide about public engagement here, but that's, uh, you know, going out to community organizations, some presenting, that's, uh, lots of public meetings that pop up at the house. It's a full court press to let people know what we're doing and ask them for their opinions and their, their ideas. Um, and there's a process to take those ideas and we kind of filter them through and see what, what shakes out of these and to, to create with any of the. Um, also in quarter one, we do, um, projections and predictions, what, what is the community, what, what are we solving for, right? Like, how big could our community be in twenty years? The last comp plan thought that we would have doubled our size. And we're about the exact same size as our last comp, we have not grown. And that's due to a variety of economic infrastructure factors and whatnot. But, um, you know, we still have to take our best guess at what that's been like moving forward. Um, quarter two and three, we're going to do scenario modeling. So, uh, we take the predictions and projections, we take the policy bookends that we've identified, you know, and we take a couple of scenarios and say, okay, if we do this, this is what the community will look like. These are the impacts. These are the impacts, these are the impacts. We, we do it for a couple of different scenarios. Um, and then we evaluate those scenarios, uh, in creating the plan and the environmental impact statement. And then we choose a preferred scenario. This is, this is our community vision. After we've looked at all these alternatives, this is what we want to see. And then that's what we, we define our.
When was our, how was our current plan? What year did we publish it?
Seventeen, seventeen, so, but.
So you're saying in twenty seventeen, we estimated that our population was going to double by twenty twenty-three? And the one before that was.
I think, I think just those. There was a medium, we took, we planned on a medium growth, not the low.
We planned on the medium growth index from OFM population growth.
You got it. And those read them on between the county and the city, uh, and.
Why? Is that just a common?
At, at that time, we thought that the, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Because you distribute growth throughout the entire county, correct? Yes, and so at that point, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to act like a planner here.
So, but I guess I'm trying to understand to me, just really quick though, so when we roll back to twenty seventeen or whatever, twenty fifteen, fourteen, when we started planning that, we were communicating to the public that we're going to double in less than twenty years.
Yeah. Was the same. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Compound for that one was the same. It was like twenty thousand of your.
Yeah, essentially.
You lowered it in seventeen.
Because I saw more growth in welfare and, you know, and so the just distribution was basically the same. Or excuse me, the total is basically the same, the distribution happened a little differently, anticipated more growth within the city.
Yeah.
Available land and the infrastructure.
The Y part is
Yeah.
Kind of irrelevant, I guess. It's the interesting on the prediction.
Open.
Yeah.
The regional trend in, in home building was
Yeah.
Right? It was skyrocketing.
In seventeen?
Well, in thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, you know, kind of moving in that direction and.
Yeah, because twenty twenty, we weren't even back to pre-pandemic, pre, uh, oh eight, oh nine recession building levels.
Shelton.
In Shelton.
Regional, regionally, things that, yeah, showing has not been keeping up. So, and.
Interesting.
I mean, we did have some big projects that didn't happen.
Yeah.
We had big box stores that didn't come.
Yeah.
And those, if, if those things happened, it, it highly possibly would have.
We had a thousand plus phones out in Sheldon Hills that never happened.
Yeah.
We've had connections that took a while longer to come along. Yeah, it's, we, we've not kept track with original forecasts and predictions. And I mean, there, there are forecasts and predictions. We, we made the best guess possible. We can say we have zoned, you know, a hundred acres at, you know, nine units per acre. And we're expecting single family residential densities, not because we're going to get, you know, nine times two point two eight times one thousand or maybe that many people. And it just never shows up.
Yeah.
So we, we do our best, um, but we can't control the markets if you're.
Yeah, it, to me, it's just, um, it's not so much the why it didn't happen and trying to go back down through it. It's just the why, why would there ever be a surprise then that we're growing? Or we're moving towards growth if all of our planning is designed around.
You should live with that.
Double, double the growth, you know, and it's like, you know, if we're actually planning for that, then, but we're not, we're not doing anything to support that plan. Yes, it's my long.
I would, I would say that, I mean, based on what's happened in just the last couple of months, you know, Asian policy wise and construction things, I think we're.
Yeah, right, right. It could, right. So like, yeah, maybe what, what we did last time, let's kind of grow from that. So, interesting.
Um, so then after we've drafted the plan and EIS and so on, um, we work on our implementation strategy. Um, if we just make a plan and put it on a shelf, that, that doesn't get us where we, like I say, what are the next steps? What do we actually have to do to make this plan a reality? Do we have to find funding? Do we have to, um, you know, change our regulations? We have to, so on and so on. Um, and so that implementation strategy gets us, you know, a, a roadmap forward. It's more than just a vision, it's more than just like, look, like, how do we get this? Um, and then, uh, around the end of, uh, quarter one, twenty twenty-five, we have our FBS finished and we're moving through council for final adoption and then the commerce for adoption. So it's a.
What does the D on the EIS?
Draft.
And S is final, right?
So again, scoping level of effort, um, this is, this is a, i- any slide I stopped with like some red text at the top. This was a place where I wanted to stop and kind of get a, a, by consensus, uh, opinion of the council's kind of level of effort. Do we, do we just want to check the boxes and get this done? Do we want like to completely re-envision the town? Or are we looking at kind of a, a good blend of both, um, within the, the timeframe and by the, we have to deliver.
Well, I'm not going to be your court all the way.
Somewhere in the middle.
Well, one tick above the middle, you know what I mean? Like, basically, yeah, I mean, we, we gotta be reasonable with our funding of all of this. And it has to be something that we could actually obtain, but I think we should shoot for something.
The aspiration.
Yes.
Yeah, 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 implementable.
Yes, we like our logo, right? Like, we like, right? You know, we, we went through that, you know, and so there's, there's certain pieces of this that we want to keep, right? And certain things we recognize need to, need to change.
And we can't change it completely. Mark, you grew up here. I grew up here. There's still the people that want it, still some history left in this town.
Yeah.
So we really have to combine our history, because once the history is gone, it's gone. So we combine our history with new updated cool stuff. And that's how we're, we'll, we'll need to do it.
The scoping process will help us out with that, right? And, and the public engagement, they'll, they'll tell us how aspirational they really want us to be with this planet, right? And we go out to the community.
Yeah.
Um, that, that a lot of it will be directed there. It's just how much do you pull on the rates or how much do you push, push on the gas pedal?
And I'm one of those that want the, the history left, but I also want us to progress. We're going to have to really find balance that.
I'm council member Bod, I think we should be visionary and expansive and like.
We don't agree.
Yeah, you know, we agree on a lot of things, my friend, we do.
Right?
Yeah, and you don't forget.
I don't think anybody's.
You're going to be the responsible ones.
Maybe a little bit more than half.
Joe and, Joe and Eric are the responsible ones. I'm always reading, so you know.
Uh, and our comp plan dictates ore rates and stuff for the future and our GFCs and all that stuff too. So we don't want to be shooting for twenty thousand people and we're only going to get thirteen thousand and then those the thirteen thousand are paying for twenty thousand people with an infrastructure. So we want to be, we want to be, go somewhere in the middle is where I'm getting at. So we don't want to be building treatment plants that will hold twenty thousand people. We're not going to get them.
We have to be conscious that there's elements of this plan, um, adopted by reference that need to be updated more regularly.
Yeah.
You know, so it's our CIP every year and it's, it's elements of super comp plan, part of comp plan, stormwater and arts plan.
And they're all based on this, this starts it.
Yes, I got it, absolutely.
And, uh, I just wanted to point out as well, while, while we're talking about that, um, level of effort, so, um, there's a budget request, I know, from the board, worst apartment to have a mission of seventy, fifty or seventy, seventy-five thousand uh, to do a transportation element, um, update. So they want to, um, we're required to have a transportation element. They want to be more robust and really look at like route networks and pedestrian networks and, um, the transportation components. So we, uh, to, to a little bit more level of design, um, than we typically just go in like standard. So they're, they're kicking in, we're kicking on that. And then we also, um, are going to be receiving additional hundred and fifty thousand from farmers to do some of our climate, when any vacation, um, so, uh, we need to, our, our two hundred thousand dollar comp plan is, is growing, uh, to become a much more, uh, broader expansive document. And then also some of these other, um, you know, some of these additional funding sources can help offset. So, you know, we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand work on the resiliency part that we already thought we were going to start to work on. um, you know, all some of these additional funding sources can help offset. So you know, we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand work on the resiliency part that we already thought we were going to start to work on. They want to more plus in that frees us in space within our consulting contract and our grant do seem other work. So it everything goes into the stew and we get more stew, right? So it's a an app.
He's laughing instead of go back to work.
It's good too. Anyway, uh so uh anyways, that's, that's kind of how, you know, a- as you hear the numbers going up, that's just because we're finding, you know, additional funding sources and additional. Um so uh moving on, um so we didn't need like a a direct consensus and then policy direction. So I'm glad to hear that people are leaning towards, let's, let's have some vision and then not, not over the top. We're not a space for it. We're not a whatever, but you know.
Yeah.
Begether. But we'll, we'll look for some visionary opportunities. I mean, I, I digging through the piles of things upstairs, there was a nineteen eighty six waterfront action. That called for more accessibility to the waterfront, but completely ignored the major property owners on the waterfront because we didn't put off the boat and we still have no access to the waterfront. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of opportunities. We'll have to work with the private property owners. We'll talk to them and whatnot, but even today, it's community plan and we'll, we'll, you know, try to, try to come to the best community consensus.
Well, we really don't have that much waterfront. I mean, even Fairmont has got rebel tracks at the bottom of it, so you know, water view, but there's not really any waterfront. The mill is the only waterfront property and the yacht club. And even there, the water goes out. So but we really don't have any waterfront property.
The, the city as a, as a policy is not.
Yeah.
The city as a concept, there's tons of work, just as private. So, you know, if we can encourage the private property owners to maybe re-envision what they're doing with their property or ship them benefits of, you know, there's, there's some buildings. I don't use much of the concept, but you keep that.
Carbon credits.
Pop those down and put us in useful and and revenue generating. And then, you know, activate the space, draw people into the community. Um so we'll have, we'll have that opportunity to have those discussions. Um and at the end of the day, we're going to be weighing lots of different policy options and concepts.
Some of these uses can coexist, right?
Absolutely.
Yes. So if we're not talking about a a clean slate necessarily, unless that opportunity presents itself, but let's look at some coexistence.
I, I like to use a river as an example where we didn't have any of even down to the waterfront.
Yeah.
They've got some really fantastic breweries. They've got coffee shops. They've got stores. They've got industrial area, all coexisting right alongside waterfront. Waterfront today is highly available and it's a really vibrant place. And so, you know, maybe we don't need residential condos down there that belong to waterfront. We do. There are some industrial, I mean, I'm saying name.
Let's figure out how we do residential industry and retail.
As compatible as possible, agreed. So we can, we can scope that and we can look for concepts and opportunities. I'll reach the property owners and we, and try to try and set a visionary process. So uh moving on to the team roles, so there's city of Shelton staff, so myself, planning department's manager, education specialist, and a bunch of people that are going to be involved, kind of steering it from internally involving all our staff at all levels. Um because, you know, they, they all have a part to play. You're providing input or reviewing documents or uh fact checking, truth in things that we hear, so on and so on. So staff, government's um to some level. Um S C J Alliance was the consultant we selected. That's the same consultant at the county as you seen for their plan today as well. Um and so we have the interlocal agreement that the council will promote that we work together with Mason County. Um in Iowa, county deferred all planning, uh with the growth of their law deferred. Um agreed that planning in the urban growth area um should be responsible with Shelton, um and we're going to take a stronger lead in that. Um as far as planning, that's a no, kind of, you know, a a go along with what we suggest. Um the city council, you guys provide a overall strategy guidance. Eventually, our responsibility for that. Those of you who are still here at the end of this, um and advisory committee, um that is our suggestion is that we have this um committee that is appointed by the city council, selected to represent the community. Um and they are the ones that are holding the working meetings and having workshops and things like that. Since you guys are already busy to nice, but we, with our council duties, um handing this off to a another engineer. Um our engagement objectives so far are to really inform residents of what the plan of A is, and the process and outcomes are uh expected to be. Um give participants more ownership in the outcome of the planning processes. We want people to, we don't feel that. This plan is cooked up in a dark room somewhere and I just have it either sometimes. We want people to have a using a lot of food now.
Taking the language.
Uh anyway, um we, we want them to, to feel like this was something that they uh at least were aware of and had the opportunity to participate in. Um we want to be inclusive of a range of perspectives. Um I will say that no, no offense to like the same fifteen people that showed to every meeting that I'm ever in, but it's the same fifteen people at every meeting I'm ever in, no matter which organization, no matter which entity. Yeah, I, I want to find more people who have ideas, who have concepts, who have passion, and try to bring them in and give them a role and a job to do on this project and get to hear from them because they represent the vast majority of people that were not here. Um and those are the people who, um you know, may have problems with the program later. I'd rather invite them in and have them participate early than different. We've already gone down the road and it's, it's hard to turn back. Um I want to reach citizens in unique ways to engage a broader audience. So we're going to try everything from showing them where they are, which is the road show on the Kuanas Rotary and um whoever to do presentations. Um that's uh.
And that's where you get the same fifteen people, by the way.
Still gonna, still gonna try.
Yeah.
Uh but we're gonna do uh web outreach. We're gonna try pop up events. We're going to have youth engagement at schools. We're going to, I mean, it's really, this is the, I think, the heaviest lift in the entire processes is getting people aware and getting their feedback and getting their to to help them guide the whole plan. Um we want to provide access for all residents, um including disadvantaged groups and those who have not historically participated in the process. Can kind of goes back to, you know, there's some very large voices who care, um and some of the, the people who are less comfortable speaking out, um for whatever reason, um participate. We want them to. Um and that includes, you know, uh we'll, we'll see what we can do about outreach to um to various ethnic groups and uh indigenous first English speakers, um deaf community. And we want this to be something that is accessible to people. Um and then the last is um, sorry, not the last time. We want to build support. Um that's general through the engagement. And then last is if we want to consult with the tribes. Um we're now required by state law to have tribal consultation um if the tribe is record in the area. So that's our partners with Spox and um and we're going to actively engage them and sit there.
You know, you talk about going to the different areas, engaging as many people as possible. You can envision a pop up tent, boom, it's in a neighborhood. You have to have something that will attract them to the tent and see what's going on. And then, and then in a week or two, boom, another pops up in another neighborhood or Walmart or Fred Meyer parking lot or something where people can really get in and find out, you know, people that don't go to meetings would wander over and see what's going on in the tent.
And and that's exactly what we're going to try to accomplish. Um we've, you know, uh been working with our consultant, um next slide here, um you know, different kinds of things that we've seen at different events. I mean, obviously, uh arts walking, limbing this weekend and their, their consultant for their new urban farm project was out there at a tent. Right? You know, with all the arts vendors and everything, that's the scene, but about their urban farm project. And you know, that's, that's kind of what we want. The Saturdays Farmers Markets, Bister Festival, Rest and Forest, wherever we move this in the park, right? You know, anywhere we've got gathering people that's city sponsored, at least, you know, like large open public event, we want those pop up.
Right.
We want that engagement. We need to have a reason to be there, whether that's, you know, sharing a message or trying to split some input or whatnot. Um but we, we will have a reason to be there and we'll target.
Yeah, I don't think that's a great idea.
Something recorded would be nice and easy too, because we all have our own different followings that we can push stuff out to. And it's good information to switch out. I mean, something quick gets people at least intrigued where if they want to get deeper, they can make a call. They can go to a, a something quicker, but like a, just a short video. Hey, we're looking at doing this. One more invasion. Go here.
Some thick tops.
Yeah.
Pretty, pretty little thirty second pay attention. And this is what we're working on.
But you'll get, you'll get eyeballs on it that, that, that wouldn't see it otherwise.
Exactly. We talked about that internally, like I said, the got to work on Saturdays and parks, right? They, they haven't engaged the public. They engaged on a daily basis on a, on a, you know, every five minutes or engaging somebody new. Uh we need to arm it for lack of better.
Yeah.
Sir, these people with those tools to engage the public and at least be able to provide the avenue for somebody to seek that out, provide input. They might not know the intimate details. Uh but they've got some tools available.
Exactly. And video, you get a twenty thirty X on video over anything there, right? So.
Yeah.
Um our consultant has done uh a, a four map that they like help us store from a studio, but they rent a vacant storefront space and actually set up shop with informational boards and have a staff with somebody, you know, and then ask questions. And it's not open the entire duration of the project, but it is a way to share some information, you know, along, you know, a main street style concept, you know, we would want it somewhere up on the hill. Or some, some, somewhere first, um someplace where people are going to see it. Um but uh you know, that, that usually works well during periods of high occupancy, you know, if there's a parade or the streets close to the bikes or something like that, like some other kind of bar.
Metro buildings available, right there next to CJ's. That's a nice sized building too.
And then we, we got traditional, traditional media as well. Um you know, I mean, just whether that's uh the, the newspaper or news, radio stations, um utility building inserts. I mean, there's lots of different ways. We have a, well, we're going to create a public engagement plan that details that, hey, this is what we use and plans for what we're trying to communicate, what we're trying to, you know, communicate back to us. It's not every method is an appropriate method for all kinds of things. So we're gonna, you know, work on this. So this is kind of, I, I tickle the uh advisory committee concept here a little bit, but this is kind of where I'm going to ask you guys for if you really want to get forward with the advisory committee, if you guys want to. It's on. Um and how many council members, like these kinds of things. So uh ideally, uh there should be about five to seven people and one to two of those should be council members depending on how much it is. Um and then the other ones we can find from our, from our, you know, people who love volunteering for the city. And as I mentioned, I would love to find people who don't. Uh people who have not been involved, people who, uh maybe, maybe they have opinions they like to share publicly, but they haven't engaged with process traditionally, like we can bring them in.
I, I, I agree with the steering committee. I, I think seven, seven's great. I think it should be seven and two council members. I think more, the more citizens on the panel, the better.
So you mean nine?
I think nine. Yeah, I think seven citizens and then two council members. It's a great idea, actually.
Yes, but you get too few, you just create an echo chamber.
Yeah. So.
So seven plus two council members does that?
I like that. Sure.
Yeah.
That's a good mix.
Um and then there's, there's two different kinds of ways to do the committees. One is we'll call it informing, one's formal. So formal, you're using Robert's rules. You have the arms to vote. You have to all of that. Informal, it's to gather. They work on the projects. They don't have a form. They, they still work on the projects, you know, keep it moving. So on and so on. Um and that's also a policy decision for you guys who want to be more formal with me or more. Favorite.
Like an informal.
Yeah. Formal. Okay.
It's fancy. Gene's going to be on it. I want it to be formal.
Yeah, we could barely do the formal like normally. So.
Right.
Even.
Um so the, the plan with this then, I'm fearing this is kind of easier. Councilmember Sherman, do you have any, maybe you wanted to add to that?
No, I think we're right on track. Thank you for checking that.
Right. Um so the, the kind of plan moving forward on the advisory committee is that city staff will issue a call for members, will reach out to people, will spread the word, will give you guys the information as well. Um and so, uh you know, kind of think about people that you would like to represent the city on this committee. Um and talk to them or give them our information, my information specifically. I can talk to them, let them know kind of what the time commitment is going to be. And there's going to be a few weekends, a few night meetings, a few, you know, there, it's, it's some work and it's a real work and group. Um and uh, you know, so people who are willing to pick that time commitment between now and basically about March of twenty twenty five.
Definitely don't want seven real estate agents.
What do you say?
A real estate agent, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
What did you say, Eric?
So we don't want seven real estate agents.
Um so anyway, so um we'll, we'll create, we'll create and fly an application um and basically allow people to submit open applications and whatnot, raise review of the application.
The real.
Secondation to you both um before the end of the year, maybe right after the beginning, depending on how many applications we get and how long it takes to to topic. During some women recommendations. You'll see a lot of the applications. And so if you're like, no, 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 actually, we don't like having two real estate agents. Or we want one real estate agent. We want one local business owner, whatever. Um you'll, you'll have that opportunity to, to override. Um and help us. Um and then those appointments will be a spy option on you guys establish that committee. Does that all sound like a good plan?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Great. Um so now we're going to talk about the fun stuff. Uh start with land use, uh scoping concepts, just if there's any major concepts. I mean, I, I get here about the height of the thing. Um but uh so a couple of things that we've already identified that we need to consider. Um so not only are there new requirements under state law, or by term that hung the missing metal housing, uh which already provide in our new updated beauty regulations, you guys have seen in a couple of months, are um, you know, getting us in that direction, but we, we do need to consider some of that. Um our UGA, we want to have more logical boundaries of UGA. We've uh drew the line around some areas that are already pretty well developed and probably never going to hit against the city. And so it doesn't necessarily make sense to keep holding that very UGA. Um when we could change the boundaries uh for areas that are low opportunities for the community. So we're, we've, we've already considered um reducing the UGA in the east, kind of around High Lake area. Um and then expanding more towards the southeast and the northwest. So kind of outward towards, yeah, the track of prison um and south heading. And so um we, we foresee increased pressure down um like Dickinson, Arfia, like that part of town further south. And so you know, that's probably a logic to place for some of that. So um uh we've also, just through the last um year that I've been here, um as we were undergoing some changes, uh some potential changes to the general commercial zone, we realized we really have two types of conversions. We have like the small, local, general commercial along the, the highway borders, like one, three, three and so on. Um and then we have regional retail, big box stores, the strip malls, the things that, like, they, they're not the exact same kind of, it's, you know, they're, they're much larger scale. They have much larger parking requirements. They, you know, they, just very different. So we've um we're proposing to create a new region retail zone, uh future land category zone um to uh try and try to create some better zoning standards that fit the two, instead of try to fit the both of the same category. Um similarly, we're also looking to create a new family zone, a place that actually encourages the growth of apartment buildings, apartment complexes that are higher density, places where it's appropriate for that to occur. Um something that's been in a bunch of planning documents for a very long time is called Water Trail. Um something that uh the, the, the concept would be some kind of like a rafting trail that, you know, during periods of pilot, you'll access different points along the river and see our community, you know, kayak or raft or something like that. And so um that's part of our kind of the time world concept for how we get people around on, on more than just cars. Pirates, news, it's a great idea. Um and also provides tourism opportunities for people who want to come here. I don't think any of you have ever seen the whole river through North Bend on a hot summer day, but you can walk across the river on that. So maybe it's and uh you can get see some of that kind of activity. So um the Simpson Timber Railroad Multi Use Trail, so the Simpson Company gave us their kind of anything that, yeah, not due to lack of sirens, due to lack of funding. And so um hopefully, we'll be able to move ahead with that a little faster than the company. But um still put it in and not anything that's in our comprehensive plan, we adopted twenty twenty five, just makes us that much stronger. Grand applications and growth. And, you know, if we can knock a couple of these things out, what's been done is they're loving improvement. I'm, I'm happy about that. Um access to Open Bay, um that is something that has been in every planning document in the city for forty years and still hasn't really come into fruition yet. So that's definitely something that we want to scope and try to figure out how, how they can accomplish that.
And that's part of the yacht coach plan, correct, is is the access down there and the new boat ramp and and a little dirt and tear down some of those buildings over there, I believe, and.
What about the uh David Shelton Terror Archer?
Is there any, I mean, I know that there was going to be a trail along there and.
That's still a possibility, still recognized within the the trails plan, the transportation plan, absolutely. Yeah, I think, I think you're seeing uh, several elements that have been at the top of the list to our. Oh, it's a space process with our parks, recreation, those basic trails plan, which is water access, trails, uh, nature trails, multi-motor trails.
Future of tiny David Shelton's Terror Orchard.
I think that's a natural, yeah, it's a natural pedestrian, yeah, connection from the yacht club. Um, or Shelton Bridge is uh, to to downtown Shelton, absolutely.
Lots of pairs over there this year.
It's a lot of pairs, thousands, I've never seen so many.
You don't, you know where that.
Oh, no, no, I know where it's at, I just hadn't looked at how many pairs.
Well, a few years ago, we were talking about it wasn't working, grafting and all that wasn't working very well.
Well, the grafting happened someplace else. They took grass off of those trees and then grabbed them onto silos. Silence that go on to the stock, I guess, and um, so the South Sound. Sorry, fruit society, I think fruit tree society, um, still, still will do a little bit of that work. Um, so they contact us annually and ask for some of those graphs. Or just glass to go take some graphs, yeah, the trees don't always produce because of the what, because of groundwater, um, so. Down some good conditions this year.
Uh, and then the last one that we already had, so um, was increasing residential density in our.
That's awesome.
Yeah, I, you know, when you look at some of the buildings that are already down there, couldn't reasonably build that today with the zoning that we have. For example, a building at the corner of Railroad and First, you know, just that one nine thousand square foot lot has thirty five apartments. I mean, that's, you know, that's like a hundred and sixty units to the acre, but we don't have that anywhere in town. And that number, if you went and told that to somebody right now, they would probably be like, oh, that's way too dense, we can't have that, but it's already here, it already. Yeah, and and so, I mean, there's there's studios, they're smaller units, but but it's here and it's here now. So if we can show people, you know, it's not something to be afraid of, it's something that we've done well through the science students, fits in the community. You can happen with people living downtown, patronizing businesses downtown, more vibrant activity.
Yeah, oh, I have to have more parking.
And there's. See, if we raise the height, we we you potentially can do onsite parking now. But if but if we raise heights and we encourage parking, that there's, there's a lot of benefits to that.
And and there's also concepts like parking districts where a city builds a garage and then people buy in credits to the garage essentially. So they don't have to build ten small garages, you've got one large garage, you know, so there's concepts that we can do that.
Parking storage units, you know, anyway.
So, yeah, encourage like the the don't, the bakery that's coming on Row Road. You know, there's an apartment above that. You know that?
That building where they just remodeled.
I believe that is for rental or rented or something.
Well, anyway, but things like that where you take a building and you build an apartment on top of it.
Um, so I have height limits on here as one of the ideas, and I I did write down some more of like the eco design kinds of concepts, smaller homes. That's something that missing that we we have to address is like cottage, rooms and duplexes, triplexes, you know, more clustered kinds of developments. Um, are there other land use and built environment things that you guys already know, like, hey, look at this, wanna wanna talk about it? Heard live work, that's a great.
What'd you hear?
Do we have anything here we're looking at addressing like maybe more tiny home villages for just, you know. People who want to downsize and have, you know, live in a community like that. Areas in town where that might fit, I mean, it's not going to obviously fit downtown. Somewhere that'll fit, something like that.
Yeah, and there's, there's a spectrum of those, I mean, there's like the super tiny homes, like the Keweenaw Village kind of thing. And then there's uh, more of like what they call cottage housing, like your smaller lot homes on like a route of central courtyard kind of concept. And there's actually a couple here in town, they're very small.
Um, the ability for like the the old school neighborhood convenience stores to come back. Uh, that's similar to your um, live work spaces, you know, I don't know.
Also neighborhood.
When you're talking about increasing densities, right? The stuff that's within walking distance, a mom and pop or something, that's somebody you can own and operate in the neighborhood.
We allow it right now through potential use, um, but.
Oh, through condition.
Yeah, but nobody takes it self.
No, really?
It's, it's interesting because I I, some of the, when I went to school in Salt Lake, it was there for a whole years. Like some of the most popular neighborhoods are the one where it's called little in the corner, no, it's like there's a bakery, coffee shop, whatever, and it's all residential. And those are the highest landed values in the city, because that's where the people want to be.
Yeah, so it's usually pretty awesome.
In some water, some water on the Yon Highway, the ice cream shop, the something cow, I can't remember the name of it. But they located their business deliberately in a neighborhood. So here you have this ice cream shop, there's a dentist shop, uh, dentist office, but the rest is all. And it works out really well.
Where it makes sense, right?
Exactly, yeah. The criteria around it, you know, there should be, you know, on a corner instead of on the, you know, the middle of the block.
Right.
But but absolutely, we should, we should look at ways to incentivize that.
Come official in here, yeah, it's like I said, I, yeah, I didn't know that, I didn't know it was an option. Cause it's.
Isn't it a disaster?
Yeah.
Uh, are there any other kinds of bases turned to the hot girl, right?
Like the the small, I like the villages of small tiny homes. Actually, not tiny homes, but smaller homes. Yeah, cottage, yeah.
Would that be on a shared property or would that be they'd own their own land?
Uh, it's kind of minimized usually, so you have your twelve hundred square foot home on a forty five thousand square foot parcel. With a bunch of other, you know, smaller homes and common area.
And then with that, I guess my my next question, I'm to to kind of, would would it have to be stick built homes? Or could it be something like nice newer manufactured, you just set a standard that it can't be a sixty two. Manufactured moment, you're going to pull and flop there, but like, I know there's a lot of them in the retirement communities in like the metro Phoenix area, like Sun City and things where. It's leased land by them, but then they can come in and they can either put a park model in there or. Or there can be park models put in there by the owner of the land and.
It's similar to that, yeah, I mean, larger than park model, you know, like their their manufacturing home is not mobile, right?
Understood, yes, okay.
We're five years newer right now.
Yeah.
Okay, move on. So, um, this is just kind of talking about scenario planning and I'm not asking for everybody to give me all the scenarios right here. I just want, you know, to to about the approach, the idea is that we're going to have, we're evaluating in five different terms. We're going to evaluate three different levers, like what happens when we we move some levers. So built environment, move on just kind of the traditional pattern of growth that we've always seen, the pretty model, uh, you know, like. Can we, you know, cluster things together, have more open space, trails, you know, kind of, um, you know, looking at, you know, uh, more resilient kind of thing. Or do we hybridize, do we, you know, try to have more like the traditional patterns, traditional construction methods? But we're integrating some of these next concepts, so through them, uh, development alternatives, um. We've got concentrated growth, like what if we put it all downtown, where a couple of nodes, then there's dispersed growth, what if we didn't put any other downtown? But we just like kind of all go out to the inputs and then a hybrid model, what if we have some downtown, some in nodes throughout the community? You know, what does that do for impacts? Um, resilience, um, these are the levers, these are just things that we're looking at, um, sea level rise and uh, uh, flooding events. So like we already have some type of flooding events that affect the downtown a little bit, those are predicted that it will still be in the next couple of years. And so we just want to, you know, what can we do to protect our community, um, wildfire, uh. Pointy gear for that one, um, drought also pointy gear for that one. So, um, you know, we're going to look at different resilience and concepts, what can we do to protect um, our natural and built environments during these extreme weather events? Um, that are becoming more and more frequent. Um, economic development, um, we're going to look at different levers, uh, like manufacturing industry, what if, what if we became the powerhouse in the area? And people were commuting to us versus what if we're just services and housing, there's more promotional potential and then. Um, if people are commuting maybe elsewhere and then balance, um, and then transportation last ones are going to be motorized part already. Like we're going to focus our infrastructure on just cars, um, that was non-motorized priority, we're going to actually. That equals far efforts to widening white paths and and kind of get away from motorized concept or dual network, which is probably the preferred option. You know, how do we make sure that both are operating efficiently? Really, the idea of looking at these different kinds of bookends is is just giving us a spectrum of options, so we know. Like when we, when we say that dual network really is the best thing for Shelton, you know, we all like naturally kind of know it right now, that that's probably what works best. But but this gives us the opportunity, really, put some, put some uh, data. Um, so are are you good with the idea of scenario planning and and generally kind of. We'll we'll be very clear with the community, like we're not picking one or the other, we're looking at what decisions that kind of. Um, and then, uh, other topics, I think we've kind of covered some stuff already, I already had somebody ask about ice rink.
Bowling alley.
Uh, but no, can I create to develop like, uh, new bowling courts? And I mean, there's the nearest one until they build minefield ones, you know, there's ones in town, so. If we had.
Shelter device.
Yeah, it we we could be the place where, you know, the new talking. This could be an economic driver, so when they mentioned that, I was like, no, it's a fair deal, it's added to the list, you know, it's something we can look at.
Well, it's something that can be used year round. I know people have talked about a splash pad, but that's all during the warm weather. But an ice rink can be, can be used year round.
Um, when I was in Sun Valley, I certainly that's there, um, not not the good Sun Valley, it's just a few miles south of Sun Valley. That one's used, they use it as expo center sometimes, they'll take the ice out and, you know, have a farm show or, or, you know, whatever, some kind of community event in there. And I'll look the ice back in, uh, it's it's a great community, so. So anyway, if you have ideas about things that you can, you know, you should have the same for years. Um, they're not things that maybe necessarily like you're putting in, you know, like we can fund this or whatnot, but we can stay. This is something we want, and when somebody's going out to, you know, look for a loan to open up the bowling alley. Community needs this, it's in their plan, you know, so on and so on, so.
Number one request from every person, we go, we're going to have a bowling alley. Work out the numbers, but at least we look down, right, you know, so. Uh, I love a bowling alley, but like it's got to go into a, it's got to go into like the, what what's it in, uh, outdoors outfitters up there? Cause the bowling alley doesn't make money.
No.
You don't make money with bowling alley.
Yeah, the food and drink.
It's your food, it's your drink, it's it's the other, it's the, it's the theater stuff, it's the. I mean, just, it it's a a a basic bowling alley is over a million dollars, and that's not the building, that's.
I think it's, I think it's more on that today.
I I'm talking getting your lanes and stuff in, like it's, I I look deep into it, I know more than one person have, it's just, it's just such, it's it's not an economic. Driver like I I love bowling, but.
When was the last new bowling alley constructed in West Royal?
Well, it was fairly new, it's the one that's in a, not not. Fast bro shop.
Yeah.
But it's supported by fast bro shop. It was, no, it's like Adrian Hemings, it's it's deep, it's an amazing bowling alley.
Population center of.
Yeah.
South Tacoma.
But it's not what's making the money.
No.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, so that's, that's the end of the formal presentation of questions and I think you guys are all diving right in and. Do you have any other, anything else you want to add to the conversation or just kind of wrap up?
Think that we really need to um, remember the citizens of Shelton when we're doing this, this land. Not too big for them to, you know, get their teeth into it, but big enough to where they see, they get excited about progress.
I don't know, I kind of thinking back, you know, you're you're making it kind of awful now, so, you know, I think Kathy's point, though, you can, you could peg the needle. And and keep, and keep the historical context, I think you can't.
It certainly can be the driver.
It can.
In certain aspects.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm kind of. We got, you know, we've got some talents of staff, we've got collaborative effort with the county. Where right now, everybody wants to work together and wants to see things move, so I'm kind of like actually left lane and hammer down kind of thing on it.
Trying to grow and build, we really are, we have so much great going on, just look at what's happening in our downtown, it's it's, there there's, there's a lot to do. There there's, it's becoming diverse, I mean, we used to have eight Chinese restaurants and eight Mexican restaurants. Now, I mean, like now it's, everything is growing, stores are coming in, I mean, it's, it's prime for growth.
Yeah.
Yeah. Man, with taking a, taking a step, yeah. Yeah, I know, I, you know.
Before the red line?
I guess like if you keep this, you know, I mean, like I said, if you kind of keep that thought in mind, because we're actually doing a lot of that now anyways, with just design and everything else. You know, we're keeping in mind, are you reutilizing rail stuff and, you know, and.
We have our historic districts, it it's just, it's hard because the majority of our homes were kind of shanty type homes. So even preserving a lot of the old homes, it's, it's a challenge because one, you'll never meet new energy code without going really deep on them. And two, they're not, a lot of them aren't really well-built homes, the lower end homes.
Yeah.
But.
So in the next, you know, ten to fifteen years, whether it's new construction or complete redevelopment and renovation of an existing home. I mean, you know, you take an old home that housed a couple of people, and now they they added a floor on it and went out the back. And now you've got four, six people living there, right? Interesting.
New construction can have um, historic elements, architectural features, right, that that still harp back to our Shelton's history. And and may resonate.
And and there's the opportunity to, you know, identify the areas that are appropriate for redevelopment, areas that are appropriate for preservation. We've kind of done a little bit of already, in, you know, if you want to take the redmond approach of things, they, you know, preserve. Little street, for example, very well, like we kept all the original, your original hundred acres place is now a Mexican restaurant. And I mean, there's, it's a really cool block, and then the rest of it, you know, is South Lake Indian dish, you know, there's five, six story apartments surrounding the central park. And I mean, it's absolutely unrecognizable for, it was fifteen years ago. Um, there's, there's a way to to balance keeping the old and getting the new and and doing it at a scale that's appropriate, so.
Yeah, this might be unpopular, but I think railroad needs to be all either retail or restaurants. No offices, no more offices when they go away and no more storage units and I think it should be restaurants and retail.
Ideally, through the right planning effort and the right process, that will incentivize people. Because retail is going to be making money, right? And the storage shed is not, because it's down the road, right? That's the goal, right? Not that we're going to regulate it out, but that we're going to push the right plans, the right vision, that's going to make that happen.
Is there any way of, I know this.
But that's okay.
Horrible, but there's any way of taking part, not having railroad main thoroughfare through town, but making it a paid. No, I'm just, no, I'm just trying to.
Maybe it's something that you can explore, but I I will just say that communities that have done bypasses like that, they try to direct their traffic around. Um, it's chilled the areas that they were trying to.
The the visiting plan does does, did suggest that railroad and code would be one-way streets, but that's probably a long ways off.
There there's a concept within that plan, but yeah, I don't know if.
One-way couplets speed up traffic, the idea, I mean, believe it or not, you want traffic, you want congestion, you want people to slow down and see your business. You don't want them blasting past and not noticing that there's a, you know, a restaurant there, that there's a shot there or something. If they're just blasting through one way, they're not seeing what's going on, it's communities that have couplets gone away from that for that reason, they want to.
Tried this uh, example to similar, um, so get it. Re- reduction in parking, which is not always a very attractive thing to talk about, but. If you're talking about wanting to support Main Street businesses, if you force people out of their car to walk. They're more likely to pull money out of their pocket on their way from point A to point B, um, versus they're driving there, right? They're not going to stop at the candy shop because kids want, oh, I can't, right? Like I did this in Whidby Island or something like that, and we walked around and it was like, yeah, because I was forced to walk around here, I just spent another hundred fifty.
You know, there's, there's.
I see.
Really. On site streets or alleys or something like that, where we can re-envision those too. And maybe they are just pedestrian corridors, or there's certain portions of them that are pedestrian friendly or parklets or whatever that might be that.
Yeah.
That tie Row Road Dakota, right, in a pedestrian friendly manner, but even look at as well.
When, when I was in Salem last year, they, you know, they have, they had a main street through town. And I don't know how long ago it was, but they blocked a certain amount off. People had to go around, park and walk, so they walked, there was a lot of walking in this, in this uh. Area where you couldn't park, you parked around the corner, none inside street. And it was great, so I said, what do you do when you want to trade? Well, they have the barriers that go down into the ground, they have the freight and then they bring them back up when the freight's over.
Ballers or something.
And our alleys are getting cool, I mean, I I walk our alleys a lot, but like, I mean, we've got that new alley that has all the graffiti in it there. And and not graffiti, but artwork, it's, it's pretty amazing. The one, the one on the uh, the Shelton Youth Connect.
Yeah.
It is really cool. Pretty amazing, the one the one on the uh the Sheldon Youth Connect, it is really cool.
It was a visionary, uh, the committee had on. Artwork in the alleys.
They are a good connector, I I I like walking, I don't I don't get stopped by anybody.
I guess that's part of the plan, or should be part, like the the Cota, the Cota Alleyway.
I've heard we're working on a little bit more lighting stuff too, and if they were a little, little better lit, they'd be even nicer.
There's a lot of history that went on in on Cota Street here, you know, that could bring some artists and. Visionaries and history can bring back.
Activating, activating.
And, you know, I envisioned somebody painting a mural on him and standing outside with his bike and, you know, leaning against the wall. Would be great, find somebody that would want to do that.
Love it.
If I could buy the building, I'll pay someone to do it.
This is great. You know, used to have, why don't we need anymore, you know, get that back, or, you know, I've seen this great thing in another, let's do, we have this here, like that's what this.
I think, yeah, I think if you have a big old fountain right in the middle of the square parking lot, we should, you know, like they did, you know, like I think I saw the market a few weeks ago, that. Bermerton, by the ferry, it used to be the ghetto, tattoo shops and all kinds of weird stuff down there, I mean, probably even more. Sophisticated stuff than that down there, but now it's it's all, you know, they, the city built, you know, that area around the. Around the the ferry, businesses started changing, and now there's like nice restaurants down there, and so.
So it's exciting and it's really sad when I'm talking to people, I grew up here, I love this town. People that haven't been here very long, that's discouraged because they think things should be a certain way, you know, and. It's exciting to be able to think of future projects that will enhance the city.
Like if we bring back the the pears, David Shelton's pears, we can have a pear festival every, every October. And make pale pear ale, you know, and you can have local shops.
Hey, I'm actually gonna go get some of those pears.
So I'm just saying, like, there's there's exciting things, we're so blessed here with 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 our abundance, and how do we turn that abundance into um. Our vision of how we want to live here.
You hear the ideas that are coming out of this conversation, right, just guys, other people in this room, and that's when we engage our community, I would, we're hoping that we get the same. Energy and some type of ideas uh and process, so um, somebody can bring a really robust plan back to this.
Well, I think this, this table setup would be perfect for then, the committee.
Yeah, what about like that kind of hackathon concept as opposed to going out to where people are at, try to host some kind of big event? That's like a, not that. Yeah, all right, maybe not, but anyway, yeah, hosting some kind of event, kind of deal that brings people in for. Ma- making it fun, because that's what I remember about like the downtown visioning plan, seeing how that unfolded, you know, they had. Maps printed and they're out in the big area out there and they had markers and they were drawing on maps and working in groups and.
We walked it, right, we walked the downtown.
We gotta not have the same end result of that, we did an awesome, awesome job on it, great things to implement, and I don't think one of them are actually.
You got your checkbook on your hand.
Yeah, anyway.
Um, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Sorry that we've been talking dying. Okay, um, well, that being said, thank you guys so much for your participation tonight, for your energy, keep the energy moving forward, you're gonna. Me a lot about this over the next couple of years and, um, and I hope I. And hopefully we end up with a result that's incredible for the community. You know, really, really helps kind of buying Sheldon's kind of new self and its old self for the next twenty years, that's the goal, so.
I see that we're doing with that now that uh you, James has outdoor dining, and I see Scott just got outdoor dining, and I know Smoke and Most did. Um, I think that should be something that we, we look at whether we have to shrink the street and make the sidewalks a little bit bigger, you know. I said, Bellingham, there's every, there's outdoor running in the entire downtown Bellingham, I mean.
And Van Doregan.
And we've got pretty wide streets and we want to slow people down, so you know.
And I'm I'm sure that we'll have another one too, I'm sure the new pizza council will jump on that at some point. Yeah, he's got the best, one of the best layouts in town for it, so.
Put in their sidewalk, you know, they took part the side, the parking space, we're talking about, you know, getting people to walk more. Well, that's a great, you know, thing, couple parking spots, and you move your dining out a little ways and.
A real wide enough to take away some. And slow some cars down.
Um, I mean, even looking at Olympic Highway North, that's a really wide road that could have, I mean, a complete street, by planes with, you know, a little bit more pedestrian amenity with. You know, a little slower speed, and you know, as as we look at resurfacing and finishing our road to to bring it up to standard.
You know, it gets me, we've got that beautiful multi-purpose sidewalk on the left going up the hill, and people are walking on the right in that little tiny. That little twelve inch spot. I don't get it.
I have one thing, I guess. Appreciate it. Uh, one question, as you know, our thirty fifth district uh representative delegation will be here Monday, ten AM. We'll have a little meet and greet downstairs in Civic Center, I want to double check on um the council's attendance, so we can notice that to the general public.
I'm gonna be there, I'll be there.
Okay, I'll be there.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to be there as well.
Yep. That's Monday the sixteenth.
Okay, that's Mr. Sherman. You're muted.
You're muted.
You're still muted.
Hey, sorry, can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
Okay, um, yeah, I have to check my calendar at the store, I put some stuff on there and I don't remember if it's on that day. So I can get back to you tomorrow.
I appreciate that, thank you, we'll notice it. Um, we'll be downstairs in back rooms, ten AM, about half hour, forty five minutes, uh. Just just understanding, uh, getting the 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 delegation's perspective on the on the upcoming session, what their goals are. Um, talking a little about what uh the the um city's legislative priorities might be, how. They feel like that might fit into those goals and what their expectations are, and then staff will take them out on a, on a brief tour around town, show them some of the. Areas of interest in the community and it'll it'll um stages for uh, I think a better uh. Package, I guess, going to them uh before session kicks off after first year, if you want to get ahead of that as quickly as we can and. Make sure they have all the information they need to help support uh our community. Thank you.
Does the council have any new items to discuss?
I just want to kind of circle back to what I brought up earlier, and I know it got into notes, but I am definitely actively pushing to make movements towards. Removing heights restrictions sooner than later, so I just want to be clear on that, and uh. The main reads, a couple of main reads I'm gonna do too, is like I said earlier as well, that we did add a lot of money to build in town, now we need to make it more viable to build in town. Because our downtown isn't going out, it's it's gotta go up, and it's just, it's just that time.
So they could, right now, they could go higher up with with the hearing examiner or with the variance, can't they?
With any P U D, I currently can, but that is not by downtown, Jake, remind me, is it forty five in the downtown, or is it?
It's it's thirty, it's thirty five, it's basically three stories that you.
It's thirty five in commercial and residential.
There's actually some contradictions in a few of those things too, because like industrial says it's unlimited, but then there's a height restriction and a different one. So like there's, there's a little bit of incongruency that some of it.
Commercial's forty five.
Okay.
Um, so let's double check that, because that is something that can be addressed, it is, it can be addressed to the DA or a or a uh or a P U D, but.
And just, once again, though, it's about giving that clarity, we've now given clarity to so many things that have to be done. To come in and think you're gonna be able to do something, then, oh, well, we thought you might be able to do it, I just bought half a million dollars worth of lots, and I can't go past three stories, like. Just getting that clarity there.
I can provide you. Awesome.
You know, you believe would be a good direction, though, yeah.
Yeah, awesome.
That's it, no other discussion?
All right, all right.